Good morning, everyone. And to our vast crowd, we usually will fill up at least half of this room, but we're going to go a little smaller today, it looks like. Everyone's sleeping in from their Halloween parties last night. So, good morning. I'm Andy Kerr, I'm one of your Jefferson County Commissioners. And welcome to our town hall meeting that we have titled Evergreen Strong: Resources and Support. And as always, when we're doing one of these town halls, and even though it has the name Evergreen in it, this is the Foothills Town Hall. And we really do these to support our Foothills community, Indian Hills, Conifer, Evergreen, Cold Creek is included in that. What's in what?
Morrison.
Morrison, absolutely. So, Genesee. So, we certainly invite folks from all over to be here. Today, we're going to be focusing on supports and resources available here in the community, in your local community, for folks, whether it's you or whether it's someone you know that need resources or support, or you would like to help out and help provide the resources and support. And so, the first thing we're going to do is we're going to hear from Shelley Logan of Mountain Resource Center. And you saw their mobile food collection van outside, which is packed full already this morning of a bunch of food. And Shelley's going to talk a little bit about Mountain Resource Center, probably focusing on the food piece, but they do lots of other stuff too. So, I'll turn it over to Shelley.
Thank you. This is a nice mic. Thank you for inviting me to come today. I'm Shelley from Mountain Resource Center. We're located in Conifer. We also have mobile sites, so we do service at Evergreen. We come up to Rich Apartments, which are senior housing area. And we also go service El Ranch over. And we go all the way into our county as well. The Mountain Resource Center's been around for about 30 years. And I run the pantry at Mountain Resource Center. We've been around for about 15 years. So, you probably are more educated about what's going on with SNAP. But I just wanted to kind of share with you what has happened since January 20th through 25. We've lost 52% of our funding because of federal budget cuts. And we service about 100 families a month. And that's a huge debt to us. And what we're looking at that's going on next week with 7.2 million not going to JECO SNAP recipients, it's really, really scary for parents and for just being able to eat the huge gap that we're seeing. When last, I think it's been about a week and a half, we've had to, the food supply on the shelves, we had to limit people. What we think about Mountain Resource Center, our programs is that we're probably the most generous country in the county, giving more food per day than the rest of the country. And we had to, we had to limit people for the first time in a really long topic. So, we really appreciate the opportunity that you guys brought food and allowing the divisions here today. That's just, we really appreciate that. And I think Kenna Schurkerr has some really good news to share with people. I hand it back to him. Thanks for giving me a moment to say hi.
Great, thanks Shelley. I'm actually going to save the news for a little bit later because we're going to go ahead and go ahead on our panel. Just real quick, are there any questions for Shelley about Mountain Resource Center? What they do, what they have done, or anything like that? But she and Kevin will be here. And so, if you have any questions about helping out and stuff, so.
Shelley, how can people support you online more and when it's Colorado Gives Day?
We're a different day. Colorado Gives. Yes, we are definitely. I'd rather not use that mic. Can you guys hear me?
It'd be better if I could pick you up on the camera with the mic, though.
Oh, would it be better?
Thank you.
All right. Yes, you can support us at our mom CTO and the board. And of course, for Park Colorado Gives as well.
What's that date?
Which is November 20th.
December.
Oh, yes.
But early things start.
They don't, yeah. I did actually forget to tell you that we also have mental health services at Mountain Resource Center. We have pro bowl counselor that serves people once a month. We also have peer counseling for addiction. We have women's group on Mondays. There's also a women's support group on Mondays. And we have a monthly health and wellness, health and wellness coach who has a monthly class that is in all of services. And I'd like to have both with our mental health programs. Like our basic needs, it's really impossible to have mental health if you don't have housing and you don't have food. So, thanks for letting me be here.
Great, all right. Cory, you're going to have to come on down now. You can hide back there long enough. So, great. We're going to move on to our panel of folks here. And I will be moderating our panel. I'm going to let them introduce themselves. But just so that you know who is up here, we have Carrie from Jefferson Center for Mental Health. We have Lindsay with Resilience 1220. We have Erin from the JECO School Board. And we have Cory from Evergreen Parks and Rec. And each of them is going to introduce themselves and their organizations and start us out there. So, with that, please introduce yourself and your organization, highlighting mental health services.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here today. My name is Garrett Campbell. I'm the manager of Mountain Services for Jefferson Center. Jefferson Center is the local community mental health center who's been serving the counties of Jefferson, Clear Creek, and Gilpin for 70, I'm sorry, 67-plus years now. And so, we provide mental health services, behavioral health services, and a bunch of auxiliary services as well. One of our, we have 10 sites just out in mountain areas. And that's really where my expertise is. Our Evergreen site is located just on 73 in between Berg and Barkin and Mount Alvin's Home Health and Hospice. So, right by El Metto there. And we have a bunch of therapists. And we have a prescriber there providing services, meaning individual therapy, family therapy, case management, peer services, prescriber services, all out of that office in person. We also offer telehealth services for folks who would rather connect with us from their homes or sometimes work sites, it's just more convenient. I did bring some flyers, so it really allies everything that we're able to offer. We see most insurances. And we're working with a lot of folks who are calling in who have been impacted by the Evergreen incident, working with victims' compensation to help fund those services. So, we want to see people regardless of their ability to pay. We'll always work with them. And again, we have, a lot of our clients, or sorry, a lot of our therapists focus on ages 15 plus. But we do have one early childhood therapist who provides services to 0 to 15. We're also always listening to what the needs are and trying to shape our services around what the needs are. So, I'm happy to be here, happy to answer any questions. Happy to see this panel. We all work together to try to make sure our families are provided with the services that's going to work best for them. So, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Lindsay Presley, Executive Director of Resilience 1220. And our mission is to empower the youth in the mountain communities to build resilient strength and the tools that they need to navigate life's challenges. So, we do that by providing 10 free counseling sessions to youth ages 12 to 20. We're in Evergreen and Conifer. But we also serve Clear Creek, Gilpin, and Park Counties as well. We also offer a variety of support groups for youth. We have monthly Beyond the Radio Groups. We've started to support our LGBTQ+ youth in Evergreen and Conifer. We have a monthly suicide loss group. We've been doing some equine therapy. We have some parent support groups currently running. We'll be offering a place for youth to connect at Go Bay starting Friday. So, at any given time, we have a variety of support groups for youth and pro-social activities. And we also were formed in 2019 by local therapists and community members that we lost three teens to suicide and saw the real need for mental health services in the area. And we currently have about 25 therapists that we contract out which to provide those three sessions. And I think that's pretty much everything that we do. We also include three parent sessions and also teacher, and three teacher administrator staff sessions if they would like them as well. And happy to answer any questions about our services. As we move on.
Good morning. I'm here in Kenrady. And I'm the school board director for District 4, which is Evergreen Artification Areas as well as the Clear Creek and El Mino International. And the district offers a wide variety of mental health services to our students and to our staff. And we would not be able to reach the number of people that we do with all our community partners that we work alongside, particularly JECO and Mental Health and Resilience 1220 up here in Evergreen. We rely on our community partnerships a lot right now because there's a high need for our students and our staff to have mental health support. And the resources are not as high as the need. So, we have multiple prevention strategies in our schools. And then we have response strategies after an incident like the shooting in Evergreen. And I'm happy to answer questions about any of them. I just don't want to go into the wide spread between in-school counselors or community partners. And then for Evergreen, additional changes that have been made this year for staff and students around staffing for mental health support, I can go more into detail around that. But I do want to just say we are happy to work in partnership with our community partners, with the JECO Sheriff's Office. It's a collaborative effort to provide the students and staff with mental health resources.
I'm scared of that one. Good morning. Please Cory, you're the Executive Director with Ray and Carter. Can you hear me?
Yep. That sounds way better.
Yeah, this one doesn't.
Maybe we pass it out.
I gave you one too, so.
So, we're, we serve the community in different ways. We provide services for about 23,000 people in the community. And part of that is mind, body, and soul. And we talk about that a lot, being able to provide that healthiness, that active. And so, we've been amazing collaboration with many different organizations in the health. Just amazing organizations in this community. But I think where we've been very engaged recently is is meeting the teens, meeting the seniors, very active spaces. We provide rec centers, programs, spaces. And really, we're trying to keep kids. And that's our big focus is when kids are active, they have safe places. They're healthy, they're active, their mind is healthy, their body is healthy. So, we do a whole range of programs. But it's been, even more importantly, we're very happy. We partner with the school in many of their fields. We have IGAs, agreements, to user spaces are instrumental in providing those safe places for youth there in fields. And we also have a variety of senior services as well from VersiPro Lounge, which is our senior center in Kalam. Writing columns in, transportation to events and activities down the hill all over this community. So, I highly encourage you to engage with Evergreen Park Recreation. So, we get, I'll go your way.
Thank you all very much. And then I did want to, we are going to make this interactive. We're certainly going to take questions. We, so Senator Cutter has some note cards over there. And if anyone has questions, we'd like you to write it on a note card and then we'll go through and do that. I'm going to ask panel a couple more questions before we keep going. I do want to point out, I should have done it right at the beginning, but we'll do it now. And Director Ken Worthy kind of mentioned this. We really want to focus on the future, resources and support available right now and moving forward. We definitely do not want to relive the past and second guess anything in the past. So, just saying that, we are, we're looking forward to going to the future. We're not going to be talking specifics around security either in schools or in the community at large at this point, other than as it pertains specifically to how we can support mental health in our Foothills community. So, with that, I would like to ask each of you, if you can, let us know the best way to reach your organization. And Cory, why don't we start at your end this time? Mix things up a little bit.
Perfect. Yeah, so we're engaged in very different ways. But we have our Evergreen Recreation Online website, which is there. So, we're static for everything, from programs to events, to activities, facilities, to silver sneakers. So, I would encourage you to go there. We also have IBD newsletters. We have email databases that go out. But also flyers. We have information when you walk into a facility, Wolfright Center to Cameron Center, or even Joseph's Lake House. Come in, learn about what's going on. That's the best way to get involved. We also have text messages as well to get information. So, I highly encourage you to go onto our website. I have all of our information. And you can either know if you want.
The best way to get in touch with the district is to reach out through email. I have a copy like a card here for anybody who's interested. Yeah. You can also come and talk to us at public events when we have our quarterly meetings. You just have to sign up in advance. And you can come and voice your concerns or your critique, whatever it is that you want to share in a public forum. And for families specifically, the best way for any of our families to come sharing this, or if they don't know, we have a family response service team. So, if folks need to get in touch with us for anything regarding a school issue, that number is on the front of our webpage or replacing webpage. And it's a great way to connect, not just with the district, but also with the coordinator who will help you find the resource or the solution that's needed.
The best way to receive range of your sessions from Evergreen is through our website and through a bunch of our book parks that have our phone number and website. That's where we are, sort of, youths can fill out an intake form and for to request individual counseling. We're all about breaking down barriers to access services. So, we know sometimes there can be a waitlist with insurance or other issues. That's where we offer free counseling. And once some of the folks have the intake form, we are back in touch with that youth within 24 to 48 hours. And then they will be assigned a therapist and hopefully have that first appointment within a few days to a week. All of that, we have an updated calendar with all our current running groups. And we also distribute that through social media. Follow us on Facebook or Instagram. And we also put flyers throughout town and have a distribution list so people can find out what services we're offering. I did see Resilience 1220 stuff posted everywhere. So, I think it's great. Jefferson Center can be, probably best way to ask is through our website, which is www.jcmh.org. And has information about all our different programs, including if you're interested in finding a four L first aid or a suicide prevention training. On the very front page, there's a big green button. On the top right side, that's, it says, oh, you have request appointment. And so, you can request an appointment either virtually or in person, depending how you want your person to be. And that, or you can call us at our main number, which is 303-425-0300. I have also our flyers here. We also have a walk-in center that operates 24/7. And it's located 4643 Wattsworth, St. Lee Bridge. And we're also for crisis 24/7. Folks can always outreach on 88.
Great, thank you, everyone. And next, I'll, and I'll let whoever would like to go first to answer these, if you have an answer that you want to share with us. Great. So, how do you work with other organizations to achieve your goals?
I'm definitely going to go first. We have staff who work very hard on cultivating partnerships across the district. And if Matt Poler were here, our Dean of Student Services, he would have an entire litany of community organizations that we partner with. I'm familiar currently with our Evergreen partners, the Mars Rec, Resilience 1220, and the JECO Center because the JECO Center is a support across the county. So, we lean into those partnerships to supplement the things that we provide in the schools. And I wish I could say more. How we collaborate, that's not a thing that I have my hands in directly. But I do know that we connect with our community partners on the regular. And I'm so grateful when we are unable to provide a level of service that our community partners are willing to come alongside us to support, particularly when information is the community and it's a weekend and our staff is not available and we have kind of off-hour needs. We direct calls to our community partners. And I want to thank Resilience 1220 for having some weekend support for our families and staff out here from the incident at the high school. So, while witnessing the ways that this community and the rest of the community shows up for one another has been nothing short of a gift for me to be reminded that even though the school district works with our community partners, those partners also work with one another. And we have a web support in Jefferson County that has many, many different avenues and tiers for people to receive support. And so, at the district, we often provide some initial supports and then are often guiding calls to community partners for ongoing and more in-depth or specialized support.
We, because we're youth-oriented, you know, we try to partner with a lot of the different organizations that our youth serve, like EPRD. We have a memory of understanding with JECO Mountain Schools that we can see kids in schools. And that's such a discretion in each one of our schools. So, we're able to partner with schools, the school counselors here, what's going on, and be able to offer a lot of services in various middle and high schools. We collaborate with Jefferson Center for Mental Health here. And I see each other a couple times a month on various coalitions. We're working with Stage Door at Conifer. We're working with Evergreen Conservatory for Music to put on some pro-social activities in the Center for the Arts. So, we've been trying to get involved with all the other community organizations and how we can partner together to offer a variety, not only of therapeutic support for youth, but those pro-social activities as we hear some of the kids are about to do out here. So, we want to offer some various things. And we'll be seeing an increase of that in the coming year, which is exciting to offer more pro-social activities for the youth on a monthly and quarterly basis. So, we just try to speak to all those involved with youth. And we really are trying to be mindful not to duplicate services, but working and collaborating so that needs are being met, but not duplicated.
Same, so earlier, we just did Mountain Services for Jefferson Center alone. We have 10 locations. Nine of those locations are embedded in different areas throughout the community. So, we do have therapists at schools. We connect with Common Spirit, some integrated care, purpose, Conifer, I'm sorry, Asperger Pediatrics. We're located in the Clear Creek County Jail. You know, I don't know what missing stuff. But we really try to provide services for folks where and when they need that. And do appreciate Lindsay and everybody to just wrap around the community, like you said, and not duplicate, but finding out what do people want and need and providing that. So, I feel very confident if a client in our office say, this is my situation, it's not something we can help with immediately. And I do have a list of amazing supports that we could call up and ask, hey, how can you help? So, we try to partner for every family or attachment.
That was very well said. Yeah, I think we can all speak to how great collaboration. But EPRD, I can speak to, we can't do this without the community. You know, we rely on other organizations. We work with hundreds of organizations and volunteers. I mean, there's some amazing organizations in this room already. EBA is fantastic for supporting nonprofit businesses. Health is fantastic with the community. And so, there's all these great community organizations that come together to support this amazing community. The Chamber of Commerce, being able to support businesses. And EPRD is very impressed to be able to support and also work with and collaborate all those organizations, all these nonprofits that are in this community that help fill those bulletins and support this community in both, in different ways. But I'll just say, since they cover most of it, I'm just proud and humbled to be a community member, be a part of this community. You know, Evergreen Strong, I think has a feeling now. It really means something. And it's just so humbling to be a part of this community, but to be able to come together, you know, in an incident like this and support each other, support your neighbors, and support all those organizations. So, it's pretty amazing, all these, this community, how they've come together. So, appreciate the support. Yeah, well done.
I just want to add how centered our community partners have been on Student Voice and writing magazines, what our students are actually asking for. and recognizing what our students are actually asking for and what it is that they would prefer group services. I think when we are serving youth and child communities, it is vital that we consider the group that we're serving and what we're working with. Because their needs ultimately that we need to meet. And who better to tell us what their needs are than those people directly? So I just really love the ways that I know Evergreen, Martin's Rec, and Resilience 1220 and Jefferson Center have worked with our students and our student leaders to identify activities and offerings and programs that, that's the, their needs and what they need in the moment right now.
I'm gonna give a plug. I, I think it does seem to your county commissioners and how amazing and supportive and so. And I don't mean to speak for you, but I mean, just being a, see, go on. They are so responsive and so supportive with everything we've asked and this community's asked. So I give them a lot of credit for what you guys have done for this community and are continuing to do from sheriffs to the county commissioners to everyone in the county has been fantastic to work with. So I just make sure you guys understand how fantastic. You may not obviously see all the things that they're doing behind the scenes, but texting and calling and supporting in so many different ways. I want you guys to know how amazing and supportive of this community they have been, so.
Anytime you want to say anything like that, Corey, you can go ahead and take the mic. It's true. Thank you. Remember, if you have a question you want to ask and write it down on the note card and Senator Cutter will come around and collect that. I'm gonna ask our folks up here one more question and then, and then we'll go to your questions as well and make sure everyone gets the information they need. So we've, we've heard about your services. We've heard about your connections and how you support the community. And Corey, I think you kind of touched on this, that the community needs you and you and your organizations need the community. What are the resources? What are the supports that would make, and certainly, you know, weighing the wand, the budget wand and having all of the monetary resources possible. Of course, that would, that would be useful. But what are the supports and resources that you would ask of your community? And knowing the folks who come to our town hall meetings on a regular basis, these are folks who not only themselves often step up to support your organizations, but also are well-connected to help get the word out. So what, what are the supports? What are the resources? What would you ask of the community and your elected officials, many of whom are in your room, as well?
That's a very good question. I'll give the short answer. One of the other one things I think everyone can do in the community is, is to normalize the struggle. We are all in need of support and rely on sometimes more than others. So really reaching out to people you know, looking for those who may not have heard from for a while and just see how they're doing. How is your neighbor? How are your friends? How are your loved ones? Just recognizing we're all capable, trying to do the best we can. And so checking out, checking out the people you care about and normalizing the struggle and normalizing the fact that it's, it's okay to need to talk to somebody. It helps to talk to people. And sometimes we seek help from professional. We have a non-biased opinion and we're going to help people with the facts and using evidence-based practices to help people get to the level of questioning that they want to. So just like we all need to go get a physical checkup, it's important for us to check in on our health too. So hopefully normalize, normalizing that would be really helpful. So you know, when a health has also taken a really big financial cuts and they're overcoming. I do want to thank everyone. We've had some amazing fundraisers and they're going to be continuing. We have people who, at our center, who I know they're working with a lot of you on legislation and fundraising. So I just want to thank you for that. You know, there will be more of that coming because we're continually being asked to do more with less. And it's, it's a struggle, but we are being committed. So thank you.
Very well said. So I just wanted to add that as well. There is a huge, you know, who might be feeling isolated or struggling. Please give them information about Resilience 1220. And then again, it doesn't have to be a major mental health issue. It can just be the life challenges that you therapy see today. And just it's helpful to talk to an outside objective person to get that additional support. As I mentioned before, we're going to be doing a lot of our pro-social activities in the coming year. And we really need access to some free spaces to offer those fun activities for kids. It would be helpful. And also spaces where wanting to do some more quarterly community and parent education around various mental health topics. And again, being able to have access to a larger space at no cost would help us with those. And you know, in Evergreen in particular, space can be a bit of an issue sometimes. And then again, as we come into year and giving, you know, Evergreen is a, and this surrounding area is a very generous community and we have appreciated deeply all the support since that Evergreen High School shooting. However, we've taken on an additional 77 new clients that weren't in our budget. And so if anyone of you or people are wondering like, where, how can I give to a nonprofit? And then this year perhaps we can spread some more information around Resilience 1220. I think there's a lot of group nonprofits here in Evergreen. So those are sort of our current, current needs.
I like this question because I have, I think, my own personal answer and probably what the district wants me to say.
That's why you were invited to me.
Thank you. I'm gonna start with my personal answer. In any community, whether they have experienced tragedy or not, I think it's important for adults to model the behaviors that they want to see for our, our children and our youth. And so I'm going to, in a attempt to normalize, say, but I can ask for help. And I have talked with the therapists since September time multiple times. I think it's important for our adults to reach out and ask for help so that our youth can see that it's possible for them to do the same. And I just, it feels very important for me to say that. But I, I really would love for our adults to model vulnerability on a speed and knowing that they need to rely on people around them. That we are in the community and nobody gets through any of this individually. So that's, that's my personal response to the question. And if it is gonna want me to talk about our budget, we do need more resources. So we can retain the mental health providers that we do have staff in our schools and the programs that we are using to educate students about identifying suicidal ideation in themselves and their friends. And programs around understanding how you can support somebody who's in crisis. Training for our staff around recognizing signs of suicidal ideation or identifying additional resources for kids who are struggling with academics or issues at home. We run a lot of programs and they need to be supported. And as we continue to face budget shortcuts and money being taken away at the federal level and at the state level, I love this state so much, I choose to live here. And I wish that we funded education adequately so that we could provide all our after-rex services that our students deserve to have access to. So we become more instantly aware of our school district budget. And we are going to need to increase our revenue eventually in the future with the ask of our taxpaying supporters to help us with more revenue so that we can retain our teachers, we can pay our teachers and our staff, our support staff, what they deserve to be paid. Because ultimately that is what our students need. Our caring adults, qualified adults who are there without, and their mental health, and their academic health, and if that would be brought to the versions of people that we want to see much into our communities that could eventually. And so we are going to need support at the district, at the school district. We're going to need revenue support. But really what we need is for people to ask questions, to be curious, to understand the process of what's happening with their schools, be willing to engage in hard conversations and find ways that you can show up and support our students and the schools that are with them for nine months out of here. Please, please, please. We've gathered together as a Jefferson County community and find ways to support our school district, both financially, but also relationally. That's what I'm gonna, that's my answer.
Thank you. So the ask is to fund all of our budgets 100%. So I just go back to your question. Just, just let the money, grants, leverage funds. EPRD is in a growth phase right now. And if you, if you don't, I encourage you to learn all the new growth that EPRD is. From a new swimming pool, from an aging swimming pool, Wolf is getting, beginning to fail. It's a brand new swimming pool for our amazing high school, girls' swimming team that keep winning states. We gotta keep rooting for them. To, you know, a safe places for a field house. We have high school kids that need spaces. You know, it's gonna start to snowing, yeah, but soon. So being able to give them those safe indoor spaces, a building, working on building an indoor field house gym, but even skate板 and a performance play, playground. All of this over the next three years, EPRD is gonna be undertaking. It's about a $20 million project here at Buchanan or next door. And in addition to Wolf Rex Center, a lot of upgrades, a lot of taking care that we have, but also many new amendments for the community. And so I think it's important, we have those safe spaces. For many of those kids that they use those spaces on a regular basis. So continuing to provide safe spaces, fun spaces for them so they can hang out with friends. Whether there's sport events or even just, they have to skateboard, skateboard, skateboard. It's not an individual. And so giving them those nice spaces is really important. But I, again, I want to give credit to Open Space, to Jefferson County. They were our first bit of funding from the Bronco Fund dollars, but also Open Space dollars of helping us make trails and, and new accesses to many of these schools, safe spaces to school, safe knee trails, trails to two middle schools are incredible. So being able to leverage and have Jefferson County School District support EPRD and giving those safe spaces, safe trails. We have a foundation as well. So you asked, you know, being able to leverage those foundations and those dollars towards grants. So being able to donate towards the EPRD foundation that we can use for these, all these new expansions. Our big thing, again, I, I go back to, you know, our staff were directly impacted. I was there as a first responder, very intense and I was in the recs and I was with those patients. And we've seen those kids approach us to staff to just even use in the rec center. And I think using their words and, you know, being able to listen to them. I think that's the biggest thing, supporting them where they're at. You said it very well, but listening to them, don't speak for them. We have two advisory high schoolers on our board who are incredibly well-studied. Tyler, you know, Tyler is an amazing opinion to represent the school and the kids. But it's really important to listen to them. So if you're able to talk to them, whatever scenario, whatever community event you're at or activity, just listen to them, don't speak for them. That's my biggest takeaway is, is listening to those people, supporting them where they're at. With all the different services we have, activities, but as EPRD, don't make a charmer.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Corey. I was gonna say, before you put the mic down, so starting with some of our questions here. So speaking about Wolf Rex Center, knowing that it's closely tied in with the school district, our question is, is there a way to incentivize the school district, sell the site to EPRD and then using that to modernize and invest in the site? Is that, since the two of you are sitting right next to each other.
That's voted on the folder. I, I think the school's been fantastic to work with. You know, there's, they're doing a lot of acquisitions and selling properties. I don't want to speak of them. You know, they've been amazing to partner in these conversations that are still in progress. I just appreciate the willingness and the school board's appreciation in supporting the community, but also these properties as well and our future properties or other properties that Amy just said. But I think there's a lot of conversations there. Is that fair to say, I think it's something?
We don't do those conversations until we surplus the property. And so once a property gets to the surplus, that's when we make any conversations about where, where it will end up. And I'm not aware that we've had any surplus conversations about sites, brick-and-mortar sites in the area yet. But I will say, the school board, current school board is very interested in working with community partners to make reuse of those, of some of the spaces that we have surplus accessible to the community for reuse and repurposing. It is a value that the current board members have stated publicly that we want to, what we can, work with our community partners in redeveloping existing structures, existing land into similar use when it's possible. We're, we're gonna have conversations with things get surplus. And yeah, I, I like seeing buildings be reused. I don't like seeing things get left alone. And I was just looked up at in Evergreen, I think it is phenomenal that we have such close partnership between the rec organization and our schools to be using gyms and auditoriums and other spaces in a way we're scheduling, collaborating on a daily basis. It's not something that happens that's up at our schools down, further down the hill. And so that collaboration, I think, is bringing community, you and our schools together. And it brings people to our schools who otherwise wouldn't be present there. So we have a good relationship, a good partnership. And when we get to re-surplus properties, I think we can have a really impactful conversation about the work for the whole community.
Great. Thank you so much. I'm going to go to this question. It says, what are ways that Evergreen businesses, I'm gonna change that. What are ways that businesses, not vehicles businesses, but businesses in general, can help support mental health in your community?
I'm gonna jump in because I was at a meeting yesterday at another college school where they have actually a monthly meeting partnership between the school leadership and local businesses to talk about just, I have a principle there that you mentioned.
That's okay.
You know, schools are always gonna need, but he called it tables, backpacks. That's what he said. And I want to say, our educators in particular, our staff members in schools, they pour so much of themselves into the work that they're doing. So businesses can come alongside and should just small amounts of work, whether it's coffee or a donut or, you know, you made the teacher's mom just smell nicer than previously. Those things are so helpful and meaningful. And that's both businesses and, you know, community organizations. So I'm coming, things that are small to support our staff and our schools. Like doing cleanups around the building. I would say definitely can speak with the leadership of the school to get some set like ideas. We had businesses who have sponsored, you know, fixing up the facade of a school. The flatboards and the cleaning it up and shining up the numbers. You know, that kind of stuff really takes some to do's off the list of our staff members who do, in order to, to keep our facilities and educate our students. an encore to upkeep our facilities and educate our students. Any way that you can build partnership with your school leadership, please, please reach out, conversations.
And there's a few ways, I think if many businesses wanted to partner with, originally it was 1220 as we said, teen night tours, sort of teen activity, to partnership together with that. A lot of the businesses right after the Evergreen High School shooting had, you know, a lot of the restaurants had things for kids, which was great, because they wanted to hang out together and have fun. So, if we could collaborate on something like that on a quarterly basis would be fantastic. Businesses have been great to help sponsor our two main fundraisers and that helps to going to provide more mental health support. And again, just continuing to break that stigma around mental health and mobilizing it even among your employees and businesses and letting your employees know where their kids could get some help.
Hi, for Jefferson Center, we did launch a campaign, it's called Be a Hope Hero, and we're, different individuals, small businesses are really coming together to sponsor and help fundraise. Let me just, I'm just learning about it, so I'm gonna just go straight from our website where you can find more information about it, but it says, Be a Hope Hero is a grassroots response to funding cuts that critical mental health funding services have at risk. Every dollar of the campaign goes directly to frontline mental health services at Jefferson Center. So, we have an amazing person named Joy who is working with businesses to help, they're putting up signage and building stuff, so, businesses not just so people know where they can donate, but also so staff, they have their own staff or they have customers and they have an idea of who to call for help and how to help. And the other thing businesses can do is to, again, as I said before, check out your staff, ask your customers when they come in, how you doing? If you're seeing that one of your staff persons is acting very different, try to find out, are they okay and do they need help? So, just checking on each other.
It's all do a little different. I think businesses are just so interrelated as communities, they support all these events from downtown holiday walks to beer chili fest, volunteer for firefighters. And so, I think, you know, as a community, I support businesses and businesses support you as being engaged, being, going to them, supporting those events, but also speaking on, we have amazing representatives here that are speaking on our behalf and so, you know, advocating, they do amazing jobs of supporting them, but giving, you know, getting the word out, communicating to them, you know, wow, unified voice really helps speak of what Evergreen specifically and the needs and wants and having them speak for us, and they do a fantastic job. Continuing to voice and be a part of the conversations is one of those important things that support businesses in our community, but also being involved in the community. Similarly, we always think, Coach, as volunteerism has naturally gone now, just in general, and so, if you have time, we'd love for you to be a volunteer soccer coach or a middle school senior sports coach, or you could just volunteer to a event. If you'd like to check people in for beer chili, for firefighters, be a part of the volunteer effort to be engaged in your community. Come do the holiday walk, you know, that, those are so invaluable beyond supporting the business and the businesses supporting you as well, so, a little different.
Great, thank you. I'll also mention the chambers, so Evergreen Chamber, Conifer Chamber, West Chamber, all are very involved and of course, businesses join chambers in order to help their businesses, but they're also doing it to be a part of the community and I know, I'm at Evergreen Chamber and/or Conifer Chamber breakfast at least once a month with Commissioner Dahlkepper and I try to trade those off and be up here for those all the time and connecting with the businesses and sometimes doing the presentations there at the chambers. We do have a couple more questions written, I do want to make sure that we have time for each of our elected officials to come up and give a little update. Fortunately, we're not gonna have our special guest, but we do have David Clark from Congresswoman Peterson's office. Congresswoman Peterson has a sick kid at home this morning and, you know, I'm going to not be snarky and say something about Congress, it's been much else these days, but I know for a fact that that is not her fault, it is some leadership in Congress that is not letting them work.
Fuck with that, hell about that for a intro.
Thank you, thank you. Hello. Thank you so much for having me. I know for me, I really wanted to be here, unfortunately for little one Sam is sick, but just wanted to iterate though, Congress, like you mentioned, all the government shutdown in our office is very much just built up with money. We're, yeah, please do not hesitate to reach out to us if you need assistance or have questions or feedback for, for any of the things. I just wanted to, yeah, talk a little bit about some of the work that Representative has done kind of in response to the Evergreen shooting. I know she's been supportive of any different violence prevention measures as well as bills specifically around support for victims, preventing shootings as well as suicide prevention that she's gotten stored. And she's also a member of the Bieters and Mental Health Task Force as well as the Kind of Violence Prevention Task Force. Also, you know, the representative is currently very worried about the ways in which the Affordable Care Act tax credits, if they, when they expire, if not renewed, will impact healthcare costs for people on the Affordable Care Act as well as the entire market with uncompensated care for people who can't access healthcare. I've talked to people throughout the district, talked about how their premiums are set to increase even double, and so, that's something that she's committed for fighting for as well as to push the administration to release a contingency fund for SNAP instead of the SNAP to choose between feeding the hungry and helping people who are sick. And so, please feel free to reach out to our office, we recently had a resource fair for federal workers and we're working to continue to see how we can help constituents and direct people to resources through this difficult time. Thank you.
Give it to Senator.
Thanks Senator.
Thank you David. Well, first of all, thank you all so much. It's just, it was really inspiring listening to you and it just strikes me that it's really hard times right now. And hearing from all of you about what you're doing and how you're encouraging community to come together is such a great example, it's such a great reminder and it helps me, you know, when I see people like you out there doing good things, because it's hard, there's so many things that we can't take care of at the Capitol, no matter how hard we work on them. So, we, so thank you again from the bottom of my heart. And we are, right now, trying to navigate through some tough issues. A key item on everyone's mind is SNAP and food assistance, which is clearly being weatherized. Hunger for people is being politically weatherized and it's beyond anything that I could have ever imagined. So, you know, we're doing some things that, we have a food drive, you know, all of the just, all the legislators are gonna be having a food drive next Sunday. So, stay tuned for information on that, watch all of our social channels and emails and all that kind of thing. In terms of, you know, otherwise, we're getting ready for session, it's early to talk about legislation, but we're kind of putting things together, figuring out what we need to do, you know, to address some of the things that are going on at the, at the federal administration. So, firstly, I'll be working on some wildfire, which is always a really important area for me. And environmental issues, I'll be working on some critical things, again, in response to some relaxing of federal regulations. And let's see, civil protections, who thinks that's important, for deliveries? And let's see, we're, oh, oh, restory and I'm gonna be working with the sheriff on some legislation in direct response to, to Evergreen. So, you know, I appreciate that, I'll do, do, do work to support the community any way I can. And that's one thing I wanted to, I wanted to say this right too, is I, people, I don't think people always realize, you're a savvy audience, so probably most of you do, but I don't think people always realize what we can do to help you as your elected officials. A lot of people believe you have, you know, an appointment, they may say, I have a hard time getting, that was me during the pandemic, you know, insurance issues, things like that, complaints, and, but a lot of people aren't aware of that, that that's what we can do. So, we can't always, we don't always have the magic, you know, the magic solution, but oftentimes we can help unstick things, reach out to lobbyists, reach out to agencies who are likely maybe to respond quickly to one of us. So, I just want to reiterate, I have two neighbors actually, they have problems, I'm like, do you know where you want to be, I could help you. So, I just want to reiterate, reach out to our office if there's something that you need help with in the community and if we can't help you, maybe we can help direct you and, you know, connect you. That's, my neighbor spends a ton of time, and I know all of them, right, he's spent a ton of time doing homework, whether it's federal or state level. So, reach out to my office, my email is lisa.cutter.tollaracco@gmail.com, that's the direct email, there's one on the legislative website as well that'll reach me. And if you want updates on what's going on with town, school, drugs, whatever it might be legislation, then subscribe to my newsletter and you can go to cutterfromcolorado, it's two Ts at O R, cutterfromcolorado at dot com. Wait, is that, yeah, yeah, that's it, I'll give you emails and that was, and then you can tap into the subscribe to the connect with me menu and you can drop that down, hit the subscribe button. So, thank you again for being here this morning after Halloween and who would be up next?
I just want to say too, it's just great to have so many wonderful colleagues in Jefferson County that were collaborating with somebody else. I'm Tim Story, I represent House District 25, which is the big hills of Jefferson County, South 570, this area of course, Evergreen, Conifer, Deon Mills, and, anyway, I'm sorry, I got lost, who am I thinking? And then also a small portion of the incorporated Littleton around the Chatfield High School articulation area. I too, super grateful for all of you coming out today and spending part of your, part of your Saturday with us, super important, I appreciate you coming out in town, also recordings, and we can have access and share that link so more people will be informed and of course also having our resource center here with their food truck so that we can donate some of the resources there. I wanted to share a few things also kind of on a different front, kind of associated with what we're talking about today. I'm just curious in the room, how many have turned in their ballot? It's due on Tuesday, just curious. Okay, so if you haven't, you are on probably, I don't know, 75% of the voters who have not turned in ballot yet, if you haven't. And it is an obscure election, the response tends to be low, but the elements in this ballot are as important as every other ballot that we ever get. And you need to know that, school board elections are on the ballot, that's for everybody in JACO, you really need to vote. It's super important to have a strong school board and it matters to our communities, our head warden, Worthy is here, she's in her re-election this year, but there are three seats, and so it's really important. If you aren't sure about how to vote, contact somebody that you know that is very engaged in that education system and gather some input from them. But additionally, what I wanted to talk about is LL and MN. Those are two initiatives that are on the ballot that are addressing food insecurity. It's about the Healthy School Meals for All program that is here in Colorado and is existing and operating, but they are underfunded. And so, LL is about if the program becomes funded beyond what was anticipated or what was expected in the initial ballot initiative, that the program can keep the money and it doesn't have to be returned to the voters. Okay, that's super important. And the other one, MN, is about increasing the funding because it is underfunded. And so, the funding is coming from tax revenue from people who earn over $300,000 a year and it is reducing the amount of deductions that they can take on their tax forms when they file. And that additional revenue is going to help these schools with meals, help these school meals for all. And once it is fully funded, when they reach the point where they are funding everything that they want to appropriate across this state, then the additional revenue will go to SNAP. So, both of those are super, super important. So, please vote yes on those and vote, it's important. And as Senator Carter mentioned, there's a food drive that legislators are hosting a week from tomorrow, Sunday dinner, it's anticipated to be from 3:00 to 5:00, but we haven't chosen a location yet. I think we have several good options and we're trying to do it something central, probably Lakewood area, so please watch for information about that, great to have you. Then you can go up to dinner at one of some local restaurants down there, back up here, you know, actually doing some food. Everybody here today, including our resource center and all of our speakers down here, have all talked about the lack of revenue. They just don't have the financial resources to do what they need and want to do on every single front. And it's the same thing for the state, we don't have enough revenue to cover all the services that we should be providing for the state. We underfunded K-12 education, it's, we are near the bottom in how we fund K-12 education compared to the rest of the country, like 48 or something, we might be 47 now. We are at the bottom in how we pay our teachers compared to the rest of the country, it's more boring. We have teachers that, that, you know, woke up with other teachers in apartments because they can't afford to buy a house. We have teachers that still live at home, they're in their 30s and 40s, they can't afford a house. We have teachers that live in their cars sometimes because they're dedicated to the profession, they can't afford a house. We need to do better. We don't invest well enough in mental health services, we don't invest well enough in IRN, we don't invest enough in transportation, roads and bridges, like everything we do is underfunded and we need more revenue. And in 2026, there is going to be a ballot initiative, it is a graduated income tax. 98% of us, 98% of the taxpayers in Colorado will not experience an increase in their income tax. The other 2%, will, people that earn $500,000 or more a year as an individual or a million dollars or 25 years, will have an increase in their tax rate. It's a 15 level, I don't know, 15 level spreadsheet I guess, and about 12 of those levels are already increases to the top 2%. It's really, really important. And we stand to earn or gain another $2.5 billion for the state to be able to better provide services. So, please keep that in mind, it's really important. In the meantime, please donate and bring food and all the things that you can do to try and help others get through this really tough time. Thank you for being here.
I'm Ruwan, my name is Commander Teteau, I'm Representative House District 27, that's our, the Jefferson My name is Commander Zetan, I'm Representative House District 27, or the Jefferson County Golden, part of our Dallas, Florida, by Saturday. This is my last term in office, it's my last year coming up and it's been a pleasure being serving with you as state representative. Thank you all for the panelists that are on my hearing and for Mountain Resource Center, for all the services that you're doing for the community. It kind of dawned on me while I was sitting here thinking about it, that what they're doing in the government is they're actually forcing people to get into a poverty situation and then dangling this big pay bonus for ICE employment. So that way they'll be able to have a lot more people wanting that job, do this horrible thing of just brutalizing and terrorizing our country. So that's, that's what I think their plan really is ultimately. But I'm working on government bills for next year. I've been working on AI regulation. That's a big one we're working on, trying to get the big tech companies to take some responsibility for these AI products that don't really work very well. There's a bunch of other things happening with data and the abuse of data and that's something that I'm also going to be working on as well on the bill to make sure that you can't get, you can't spy on people unless you have a warrant. Sounds like the Constitution to me, that we should be upholding the Constitution. Another one I'm working on also is for HOAs, new HOAs, condos or townhouses, be sure that they have the tools to have a financial future. It's not going to be in the favor of developers, but actually be in the favor of the residents of those new buildings and they all have a better future for themselves if they're settled. This is the kind of stuff I'm really trying to focus on because consumers are being kind of railroaded all the time by big corporations, big tech companies and all the power and the money that's being pooled into very small amount of resources. And then we just kind of get scrapped, we get pushed around and bullied and I'm not going to stand around and let anybody bully the people as long as I'm a representative and have the power to pay back. And I'm also working State Treasurer. There's, the election will be in June for the primary and if you're an overachiever and you want to be in the caucus and the delegate, we have some information about that as well. Get it from my, just the lid back in the room, so you can find out about that. The treasurer is very important, office the whole, has a lot of power actually. It's not as powerful as it seems some of the other ones are, but we have finances and the ability to invest money and to create programs that help benefit people, which I am working on some details on right now. We can put our money to the best use and actually help the people that live right here in Colorado and use our money to the best advantage that we can. So I'll give it brief, I know Andrew is going to find you a tiny bit over time, so we still have a big announcement to come. Rishabh Garg has to do so, but hand it over to Rishabh.
Great, thank you. And now we built up this big announcement so much that, almost. So of course we've reached time, we still have more questions. I'm imagining that as our panel folks are walking out to the parking lot or other representatives, if you have specific questions, you can ask them, but apologize for running out of time we, we must do so. I do want to give a little bit of context as we've all been talking about the food crisis that's happening, our SNAP crisis that's happening in our country right now. So yesterday I spent hours and hours in various meetings with our staff, but also our Jeffco Food Task Force. Shelley with Mountain Resource Center was in some of those meetings as well. A little bit of context, people were like, "Oh, well, the governor and our joint budget committee have released $10 million to help out." In the state of Colorado, the amount of money that is going to be missing in our food system this month is $120 million, so it's less than 10%. Obviously it's going to help, but it's, it's still not going to make up for the loss. Jefferson County alone is going to be missing out on $7.6 million that would go straight into EBT cards that people then take into the, into the food store, your local food store, and, and use that to purchase that $7.6 million missing from the Jefferson County economy. And yes, our number one focus is on feeding hungry people, but that's also an impact to our local businesses and our, our community at large. We have 22,000 families, 38,000 individuals in Jefferson County who rely on SNAP to some degree or another. Some people get, most of their food through SNAP, some people just get a little bit, but everyone's going to be impacted. With that, these meetings I was in with our staff yesterday, we are, Jefferson County is releasing $250,000 to help out. We still know that's just a tiny bit of what we need that system wide, but we're releasing $250,000 directly to six food pantries, including $20,000 directly to Mountain Resource Center. I wanted to have the check with me, but to hand it over to Shelley, but I don't have it. They will be getting it on Monday. So that is, is happening, the Action Center as well, and there were four others, I don't remember all of them off the top of my head, but I'm, and I'm getting, on my phone there, I'm getting messages from our county manager and from all of our staff members who are working on this over the last 24 hours to actually get these, either the checks written or we had to do some legal work around intergovernmental agreements or MOUs and boring stuff, but we had to get those things signed off to happen. But that $250,000 will be into our food pantry. We do know, again, that there's so much that everyone can do. Not everyone can do everything. Find something that you can do, whether it's helping with a food drive and your Jeffco elected officials will be doing the food drive next Sunday, November 9th. Not sure where yet, but we will be doing that. And then I know Jeffco Schools is, is doing a big one next Saturday. We do know where, that would be at the Jeffco Stadium, right at 6 in Kipling in Lakewood. Do you know the time on that here? Don't, yeah, but huge.
I feel like it's 10 to 12.
Yeah. And of course you have the Mountain Resource Center right here in the foothills and everything you donate money or food right here in the foothills at MRC will stay right here in, in the foothills. So with that, again, apologies, we do have more, more questions and everything, but I do want to let folks go, enjoy a beautiful Saturday out there. Thank you for showing up. Thank you to our panel members again for all the information and for being a part of the organizations that you are a part of that help support our community and keep showing up. Thank you.
And it's nine to one.
Nine to one. Nine to one is the school district food drive next Saturday at the Jeffco Stadium. Thank you.